...of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mrs. Mayor, if you do the roll call, please.
I will.
Tom Cruise. Um, I haven't heard from him, so he may be coming late.
All right.
This is the one, I'm sorry, you're right, he is excused.
He is.
I did get an email, it was, seems like forever ago.
Alex Akri.
Here.
Cheryl Hancock.
Here.
Anita J. Kaczynski.
Here.
I'm here.
Tim Meniker.
Here.
Lisa Collins.
Here.
And Gary Dunham.
Here.
Okay, so with six of the seven school board members present, I would declare a quorum. Board norms reflection in your folder are the board norms that have been adopted in February of this year, so if you take a look at those as a reminder of the agreed-upon processes for our meetings. Approval of the agenda, I would note that the agenda has been posted, distributed, and sent to the local media. With this in mind, are there any changes to the agenda? Seeing none, I would undertake a motion to approve the agenda as published. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Okay, all those in favor of approving the agenda as published, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Motion carries. Then public participation, is there anyone who wishes to address the board relative to any item at this time? We ask that a five-minute time limit per person be followed. Please come forward, state your name, address, and a topic to be addressed. Okay, I don't see anyone, so we will move on to recognition and thank you. Dr. Carlson.
Three acknowledgements and thank yous this evening. First, to the La Crosse Community Foundation for the recent donation of $2,250 as part of the Jim's Grocery Bank grant. And these funds will pay for meals for children who are in need within our school district as far as for meals. Also, University of Wisconsin, La Crosse, we thank them for their donation of $500 as part of the Cooperative Teacher Grant, which will be used to purchase, in this case, an iPad Mini to be used by the Holman High School's Physical Education Department. And then finally, we thank Ultra Federal Credit Union for the recent donation of $500, which will fund the purchase of an iPad to be used by our students at the high school as part of the school store. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And as usual, we recognize these folks and organizations that make Holman unique and help enrich the lives of our students, so we do thank you on behalf of the Board of Directors. District administrators' report, Dr. Carlson.
Just a couple of comments, there's several items here actually, but I just wanted to acknowledge that it is ninth grade orientation this evening, and I think most of us discovered that as you drove up and looked for some alternative parking, so I note that too, that our high school, Mr. Bear is, that's where he is at, as well as some of our other high school staff, so it's another indication of school year is quickly approaching. And we actually, we welcomed new teachers this morning, and thank you for so many who are involved with that, especially Wendy Savasky planning that event, and then that continues into tomorrow. And then, all our staff return on Wednesday for, we have a breakfast, which the board is invited to attend, that starts at 7:00 a.m., and then our recognition program at 8:00 in the high school gymnasium. And I hope, hopefully, the weather is going to cooperate, it's going to cool down just in time, so we'll see. So, just a couple of those, and then of course, most importantly, students, a week from tomorrow, return. I do have a couple items that are listed under the, under my report, that in part, it's going to be an opportunity for you, the board, to provide some reactions, some input on some of these items, and some of the others are just for information at this point, but happy to take questions. So, if I could start with 9.3, on Board Policy 538, Evaluation of Personnel. The board reviewed this policy back on July 14th, prior to moving it to the Personnel and Governance Committee for their review and examination and work. The Personnel and Governance Committee approved at its August 13th meeting to move the policy forward to the board for a first reading. At the Personnel and Governance Committee meeting, two areas were discussed and suggested to bring to the board for further discussion, either prior to a first reading or as part of a first reading. I included this as part of my report as I'm, as I and we are looking for direction on the board, along with input as to how you would like to proceed with consideration of this policy. Two areas of interest that the board may find beneficial to discuss prior to a first reading. The first area is the requirement by statute to include in the policy a statement that outlines penalties for breach of public release of an educator's educator effectiveness summary data by both employees and school board members. For employees, the language reflects the progressive disciplinary process, and for board members, the draft that you have includes language provided to us by the Wisconsin Association of School Boards. The Personnel and Governance Committee did not feel this is something the committee would discuss and make recommendation to the board as part of the policy, it's something that, that the board itself would need to review and discuss separate from the committee. Everything else really went through the committee, and as far as the committee was concerned, was ready to move forward, and I would ask at any time on this, either Cheryl or Anita or Jay, I mean, contribute to this as needed. The second issue is a continuation of what I mentioned to the board when the policy was presented back on July 14th, related to the administrator evaluation guidelines attached to the current policy. It has been, at this point, the administration's recommendation to move the guidelines to an assessment manual for that employee group to be consistent with other employee groups. Due to the new educator effectiveness evaluation system being implemented statewide by the Department of Public Instruction beginning this year, there are changes to be made in the guidelines for those administrators who will be on the educator effectiveness evaluation. Among the recommendations includes the possibility of following the prescribed educator effectiveness evaluation cycle, where the principal experiences a summary year every third year, and then the other two years are called or referenced supporting years, which there are different options that can take place during that time. Currently, principals experience an annual summative evaluation, and having the summary year annually, or every other year, or every third year, is a local decision. Okay? It's a local decision. It must be at least every third year by statute. Teachers are on an every-third-year cycle for the summary year. So while the Personnel and Governance Committee has approved moving the policy revisions to the board for a first reading, it perhaps is beneficial for the board to have an update on the implementation of the educator effectiveness system before, for both our teachers and our principals, and so that, if this would be helpful, we are ready, and we are planning to give a presentation on an update on the educator effectiveness evaluation implementation at an upcoming board meeting in September, and that may be beneficial for the board too, moving forward with this policy. As of now, we've, we've made plans to, for our principals under the evaluation system to move them all to year one for this year, so nothing would be changed at this point for this year. That's, that's what we have put in the works because we just, because of timeliness, we need to get going on this, and so we are making plans to do that, for all the principals to be on that summary year this year, along with associate principals. So I, I've given a lot, I've said a lot, but there are two main issues here, and probably for tonight, the, one of the main ones is this, this breach, this language on a penalty. And so, if you look at your draft, you should have that, and it would be under, I believe, number four.
Yep.
And again, this is something that the Personnel and Governance Committee had not really even seen since we've worked on this even since then. So looking for comments, feedback, but the policy is something that, it's a, it speaks to the evaluation of all our personnel, not just administrators, not just principals, and so on. So, we're looking for input, especially on the penalty at this point, and, and direction from the board.
So if you look at that item, 9.3, item number four, penalties for breach, district staff subject to the district's progressive disciplinary process, I think that is, you know, very standard language. And then board members, I know we were discussing this, and we were looking, the Personnel and Governance Committee was looking for some language, this is the language they receive from the Wisconsin Association of School Boards, so if a member of the board would release, publicly release educators' data, summary data, that type of thing, this would be the penalty that the board could be subjective to, and we could include one or all three of them. I think as a board, we're responsible to include something for a penalty in order to have the policy. But, yeah, we, we couldn't come up with language, the Personnel and Governance Committee, so that's where this language came from. So, your feelings on this? Input, thoughts? I guess that's what you're looking for this evening.
Evaluation, to me, is always good. And the three items I'm seeing here, if I can't live by any of those, I should be off the board. I really should. So, I think that's fine.
Any other? Okay. So then the next item, and this is something that we had a little bit discussion, because administrative evaluation guidelines were included in this policy, and we're trying to make this policy more across the line, only administrative evaluations, guidelines were presented here. The idea, the intent, is to remove the guideline statements from the board policy, and then be reflective in the assessment manuals. Dr. Carlson pointed out, however, that number one, if we follow and we look at what the new educator effectiveness guidelines are, it's a little bit different than number one. It, right now, we expect our administrators to be evaluated every year. There's a feeling that, I think Dr. Carlson explained, that under the new process, a summative or a complete full evaluation would be done probably every three years, with additional evaluations on the off-years, and, and we had some good conversation about this, and, and really wanted to bring this to the board, because, you know, I, I felt that the board's opinion, and I'm just speaking for myself, was that we do evaluations every year of our administrators. I think we want to, you know, we're not really clear on what those off-year evaluations would be, and I think if we do this, we would want to assure that if there was someone who had a performance improvement plan in place, that they would be reviewed annually. But that was just my opinion, and so I, I said we should just bring this to the board for discussion, and make sure that the board's opinions reflected in whatever that new assessment manual does. We can do it differently than what the educator effectiveness process says, we can require a summative evaluation every year, if that's what the board chooses, so just wanted to put that out there for some discussion.
And again, as Mrs. Savasky and I talked, we, we think it's timely to provide an update to the board, no matter what, on the effectiveness, and all the work that has gone into putting us in a, what we believe is a pretty good place for our educators, and so that, that may be helpful too, for the board to have that update as well, but.
So input thoughts?
I guess my two cents would be that I think having an annual evaluation is appropriate. It seems as though three years is too long, two years seems to be too long to do an evaluation. And, and I, again, I agree with you, Cheryl, I don't know what the other summative evaluation process would be on the off-years, but how else do you kind of monitor that comprehensive detail of, you know, performance? Without that, so my, my thought would be annually would be appropriate.
I agree, I think everyone should have an annual evaluation. It's just a good HR practice.
If it were every three years, could there be a clause or something that said if, if something was targeted, if, like you mentioned, a special plan or something they need to improve on, could it then kick into every year? I mean, is that a possibility, or?
Yes, and in fact, as we provide more information on all the work that has gone into, even with our teachers, you'll see measures built into that as far as, just what you're talking about.
Yep.
And so, absolutely, I don't want anybody, and I don't feel that's the case, certainly because we have annual now, it would not be the case that we're just going to, you just let two years, and that's not how we, how we would go about this. But, there's different things that, through those supporting years, that you can put in place as well, and, and we're doing that with our teachers as well, so.
Yeah, that's why I asked that. I know that three years seems like a long time, but I also know what evaluation for teaching staff means. Every three years, there's a huge evaluation, but if a problem is identified, then every year, that problem or that issue is addressed. And that would not bother me so much, because I also know it takes a lot of time to do evaluations. But if, if there were a clause somewhere that did not let a problem not be addressed, I'd be comfortable with that, either way.
Gary?
And I think that three years, two years or three years might be appropriate, and the reason I say that is usually the goals and tasks we have, that we evaluate them on, aren't short-term goals, aren't short-term tasks, they're usually tasks that take a couple of years. So maybe a full evaluation, and a relook at their goals and everything might be appropriate every three years, but every year, take a good hard look at where they're headed toward those goals, and if they're achieving those goals. Not a full evaluation, but trying to see if they're moving closer to those goals, because I noticed that on, we set goals from year to year, they're very, they're very seldom, very seldom are they ever any different, they're usually have the same goals for two or three or four years, and then things might change, so. Set the goals for three years and evaluate them every year, see how they're, how close they're getting, because I don't think every year you're going to change goals.
And part of the educator effectiveness, half of it is the goals sorts of things, and the other half is building, I guess for building administrators anyway, it's how their buildings are operating, and, oh, help me out.
Right, well, yeah, you have the, for the principals, it would be the school learning objective, which would be closely aligned with the teacher's identified student learning objective, referred to as SLOs. And so, that, you have that piece, but then you also have the prac, the professional practice piece, and so.
And what's included in the professional?
There are 21 components that you look at with, under two large domains, and this is maybe when we're getting into a lot of detail, which that may be why we'd be happy to give a little bit more of a information or update too, to, to help you look at this further, so.
What sorts of things are included in the, the professional practice? Just a couple examples.
Well, as far as, as far as the principal?
Right, building administrator, principals.
So, the 21 components, you have on the instructional side, and I'm going to, I can bring this up, and we can talk, you want me to do that?
Sure. Because I think if, if in the off-years, those things were looked at, and somehow, and that was part of a formal?
I don't have a visual for you, and I could see if we can do that for you as well.
Wendy's kind of chomping a bit.
Yep, she is. That's okay. Because like you said, Gary, those SLOs, student learning objectives, those kind of things, as a building, it's going to take time to get there. But some of those other things that are, you know, should be happening every year, and it is our practice now, I think, to evaluate every year.
Couple weeks ago, we had an orientation for our principals on this, and so, as you, thank, as you, is it on the monitor here?
Mm-hmm, it is.
So the two domains that I referenced, so you have the effect. So you have, under these two domains, you have then the five areas of, kind of subdomains, and you can kind of see, you have 21 components, and if you look at, you can take human resource leadership, for example, and, and you could look at through whether it's how we are selecting, recruiting, hiring, developing, and, and going through that, you have the instructional leadership, and then on the other side, the leadership actions, and you can, some of them, if you look at 2.1, personal behavior, what we'd be looking at on any of these, we'd be working with the principal, with myself, and looking at evidence, and to really go along with each one of those components. And then you're assessing those different components. So, part of the summary year, part of the summary year, this is what happens, that right from the start, so for example, in the coming weeks, the principal is going to identify a school learning objective, and then also be looking at, I'm sorry, I got a fly, you'd be looking at the different component areas as well. And, and in the end, at the end of the year, we'd be rating, I would be rating those components based on the evidence that has put in, been put into the system, in large part by the principal, but working with me as well. So there's a wide range, but there's, so this is that side of it, in large part that I think what Mrs. Hancock was referring to.
So this would be on the opposite side of the SLO goals.
Okay, so the educator effectiveness system is built on two sides, both the practice, which represents that model that Dr. Carlson showed you with the 21 components of an effective administrator. Similar educators have 22 components that are typical of an effective educator. The second side is that outcome side, that is based on the school learning objective, and also then value-added reading data for elementary and middle school, and high school graduation for, for a high school level, until they have an assessment that will have that data, which will be shortly with the new ACT Aspire Early High School Test. Does that help?
Helps me. Others? Lisa?
Well, I'm still not, this is the off-years then, of the main, or is this the primary evaluation? Like, the off, because you were talking about the offset years, what's going to be the content of the offset years? It will be kind of broken down, the 21 components?
I think it would be both on the summative year, they would look at both, the 21 plus the outcomes, and then is there a possibility to just look at the practice on the off-years, so that it would build to having the outcomes?
So can I just, so the stu, the school learning objective, each year, a principal or a teacher will set a SLO goal, and that goal, over the three years, they will self-score, but then will be given a holistic score at the end, and that's on this, so there is that work on the off-years, that they are writing their school learning or student learning objectives. The other portion then is a teacher practice, or the principal practice in this case, and that would be during their summary year, there would be a formal observation, but then there are many observations within that, that are done on non-formal years or non-summative years. So it's not like the evaluation only happens every three years, it is ongoing, but it's really only reported at the end of three years.
So if you are principal that's on a year one right now, we'll be rating that SLO. If a principal was on two years or three years, then it would be, as Wendy said, putting those SLOs that have been self-identified over the three-year period, and then a score would be done on that summary or third year, kind of building off of those three years of the SLO. I think, and as Wendy mentioned, that even in the supporting years, again, it's optional, I mean, but those sampling, sampling visits, or those many observations can be done as well during those supporting years.
So what happened if in the, you, you've indicated they set their school learning objectives, and then in the first year and second year, they aren't, their school isn't making those objectives, isn't meeting those objectives? Do you wait then till the third year? How do you document that?
So it's similar to the teacher's side, which they will be meeting with their evaluator at the beginning, and at the end, to be talking about, and even a mid-year conference, talking about how are they progressing toward their goal, they'll be collecting data along the way, so it's not waiting until the second or third year to say, I'm not making my goal. You're having those check-ins periodically through the years, so that at mid-year, if you're falling below your goal, you know, would have a conversation, was that goal truly attainable, or did you set your sights too high? Or if it is attainable, what are you going to try differently in your school or with your students to help kids reach the goals?
I just have a question. And I would want to word this correctly, because I love our administration and what they do, but the only evaluation, as I understand it, comes from someone above them. The evaluator is their boss, so to speak, so a principal, it might be you, Dale, or, or whatever.
Correct.
Right? But then I also wonder oftentimes about how they'd be evaluated if a staff put in evaluation. And I don't think teacher effect, well, I know, teacher effectiveness does not have that, and yet, that's a critical piece of how leaders lead. Is there, I don't know, I'm just throwing that out there. Maybe, maybe it can't happen, but to me, is there, is there a way to, even if teacher effectiveness doesn't call for this, would we ever get to a point in our would we ever get to a point in our district, as if you had a business and you had department chairs, and you would encourage them to ask the people that worked for them how they feel about them? Doesn't always mean you agree with everything, but you get kind of a, you get a feel for how your staff feels? Have we ever done anything like that in Holman?
Actually, Kate, that is part of educator effectiveness.
Can you describe that for me, Wendy?
Sure. When you look at this framework, it's within the components. And if you especially look at under domain two, leadership action, use of feedback for improvement. So getting feedback from stakeholders is very important.
So is that like a mandated thing? Or is that like, if you want to get feedback, you can get it? I mean, in our district, does everybody ask for input?
You know, it'll look different ways. I mean, our district annual survey is a great way to get, get that feedback on how we're doing and what we could do differently. And I know currently, our administrators use that at the data retreat to help guide decision-making, so.
And the, the input for that feedback is from their staff? Is that what you're saying?
It's from student-staff parents.
Student-staff, a lot of different bases, thank you.
I have a question. For the evaluator, how much, I mean, two to three years at a time to track information, observations, you know, progress? Requires a lot of contact, follow-through, documentation, you know, coaching, supporting. That's a lot for that evaluator to do for that span of time. And then guide that administrator or that teacher into, you know, the right path? And if they aren't self-identifying issues, or they aren't self-identifying challenges, then that evaluator has to have those skills to be able to facilitate that conversation? Is this, is there training involved with, like, is already?
So we have been working a great deal, you know, as administrators, going to different sessions at CISA, also ourselves, looking at pieces of educator effectiveness, looking at the requirements, having the discussions on what would it look like if, if this situation happens? So I mean, we definitely are working on that. I mean, you're right, it is pretty labor-intensive. I know last year in the pilot, just the one teacher that I worked with, each time I evaluated her was an eight-hour adventure. So between all the, you know, the data collection and everything that we needed to do, the pre-conference, the post-conference, but the conversations with the one person that I evaluated were amazing. And, you know, I think we have to look at, if you have those qualities and you have those honest conversations, they're going to help improve practice and help improve student learning. And that's really the goal of educator effectiveness. It's not to rate, rank, or remove teachers. It's all about, and principals, I should say, it's all about making us better.
And that relationship, I mean, you have that leader relationship, that trusting relationship?
Dr. Carlson, did you?
Well, I think that this is a little bit of where we're possibly going to go at a next board meeting, as far as providing an update. So Wendy and I will need to visit a little bit, and how.
Yeah, and I think that would be great. I think it would be timely. What I'm sensing is that there's a feel that we not necessarily have to have that full summative based on the outcomes kind of evaluation, but that there should be something in the middle, and something that's formalized and documented. Because we know from other districts that it's, for those times when there are difficulties and areas room for improvements to happen, that that's, you know, what really needs to be, I think, addressed in some of these. And we hope that not to be the case, but we have to watch out for those, I think, so.
Yeah, and we don't, it will not be the case for our teachers either.
Right, exactly.
At that level, so. Well, I appreciate the feedback. I, I think that, again, there are two, within the guidelines for the, as Mrs. Hancock referenced, there's two issues here. But it's perhaps difficult for the board to do one without the other. But in the end, we are recommending that those guidelines are moved to a different place, a manual, much by, and not attached to that actual policy. But because it is part of that current policy right now, and by doing that, obviously, want the board to have some reaction, just like you're doing now, as far as how those guidelines change. And we will, we can go through more of that, because there's some additional ones that are impacted as well.
Yeah, I think some of the ones that they shared with us were related to the storage of that information. And when an evaluation currently happens, and what's in the policy right now is that they receive a paper copy. Well, under the new effectiveness, there's a whole different process for that. And those are things that we understand. I think some of those that philosophically change, maybe some of the beliefs that this board has is, are the ones that we want to be involved in, so.
Right, right, and that's, that was part of the purpose for tonight.
Yeah, good. So then the next item I think you have is the continuous improvement plan, PDSAs, which we talked about.
So included in your board packet are completed 2013, 14. They're really, the PDSAs are the Plan Do, Study, Act summaries. And I would encourage you to peruse each PDSA to learn of the progress made throughout the school district and, and many of our targeted growth areas. Again, I want to thank Wendy for the work she has done in this area, her guidance and support with all the PDSAs at the schools and the department levels. In fact, we're already moving into our 2014, 15 cycle. As you review the PDSAs, you will know that each includes the steps of the Plan Do, Study, and Act. And the Plan, again, is where a gap is identified and which you are wanting to address or improve, leading to a change. The, this is where the goal and the approach is also identified. After the Plan, the next step is Do, where you develop and implement, an implementation plan with action steps, and it's really testing that change that you're seeking. And next is the Study step, where data is analyzed after implementing your approach. And finally, the Act phase or step is where you revise and/or continue the implementation based on your data analysis. So these, the improvements are made within the action steps here. And this cycle is continuous, and as the data is analyzed and modifications made. So last year, what these plans, what these look at is over three-quarters, kind of a recycling, a continuous going back and analyzing and making adjustments and modifications. So there's a great deal of information to take in, but know that there is great work going on as we commit ourselves to this continuous improvement process in our practice in order to, number one, increase student learning in the school district, and also all the other services that we provide our, our school community. So the purpose tonight is to provide you with the PDSAs that are included, bringing the 2013, 14 to an end. And if the board is interested in more information and presentation, be happy to do that as well. Again, a number of the people from the leadership team in the audience are directly involved in leading their PDSAs in their buildings or at the department level. The board has started, in a sense, its own PDSA process by first identifying that goal. You looked at, with Mr. Phail, you looked at some gaps that you're wanting to try to address together. And so that's just the start. Now, you have not had the opportunity yet, and that would be coming up at the next development workshop, of really getting into that plan, continuing and finishing that plan phase and moving into the Do. So anyway, you have a lot there to digest, and we'd be happy to present more in the future that would be helpful for you as well.
I just wondered if everybody understands the format of this, or would it be helpful if maybe he took us through one? Or would you, Kate?
To go even through one is really time-consuming. I'm just going to say that. I've, I've read, I tried to read every single one, because I pride myself in reading everything that comes on my agenda. But this was the most amount of documents I have ever seen. It's the largest amount of data that I tried to digest. And I had a couple of thoughts. Thank you to all of you who do this. Second thought is, when you do this, what do you have to let go? That's maybe another meeting. But the creativity and the beauty of the art of teaching and administrating, I cannot imagine how long it took to put these together. I don't feel the need to go through them tonight, because I think the public would also not benefit from that. And that's often what we do as a school board. So yeah, enough said, without being redundant. I'm grateful for what teachers and administrators need to do right now with this. The whole concept of, of PDSA is incredible. But when I tried to read it, and I'm a speed reader, I've spent probably 24 hours reading every single word that each of you put into that. I did see some patterns, which maybe, maybe as a school board, I don't know. And maybe even for administrators, is there any way it could be shortened up to just get to the heart of the matter? So for example, one school identified that, well, our economic, economic. Thank you. Those, those kids are hurting, and we're not addressing that yet. So that's what I want to know as a school board. And I'm guessing that's what teachers want to know and administrators want to know. And if, but the charts were, you know, if you've read them, you know what I'm talking about. And I want to do a really good job. I want to read every single thing, but I can't, it was like too much for me. It was an overload.
Just one was 41 pages all by itself.
I think the biggest one I saw was 54.
Yeah.
And it, I'm not, I don't mean to belittle it or make fun of it. I'm so proud of all the hard work that everyone has done, because they have to do that. And yet, ultimately, data or testing or anything else has to come back to, why do I need it? If there's something I need to know, get to the heart of the matter. And I bet it's not just me that feels that way. And how much of this are people's hands tied? So they have to do that? Or do our people have choices? I don't know. Administrators, maybe they have some thoughts, but.
It does make me think back to maybe a year or so ago when we were talking about a data person, that, you know, you talked about what is collecting all of this information, taking away from. And I suspect if it, our staff who are in the classroom, who are administrators that have other roles and responsibilities are taking time to put this, are having to put this together, it's got to take away, as you said, from some of the things they do, so.
I think so, and for every administrator that gathers that and all the help they get, there are, under each administrator, 30 to 40 teachers who are donating hours and hours, punching numbers into a computer. And what can't they do because of that? And again, I go back to our hands tied, but it worries me. It worries me a lot. There was an article in La Crosse Tribune about, maybe you can help me, a student from Holman who went to London.
Oh, yeah, Taylor Peterson?
That's it. And the London educators said to her, "You know the problem with American students is they have lost their creativity. They're so used to being told exactly what to do. We don't do that over here." Yeah, so I'll be quiet now, but.
Any other comments or questions? Okay.
Thank you. And then the highway HD speed limit, you may have seen that. We've communicated that, but you've also perhaps seen it in the Courier Life. In recent weeks, we've had discussion with the village of Holman regarding a number of issues. And I know Dr. Trunst is here. And we've been working, I approached the Chief McHugh at the village as well. And there's a couple issues and concerns, but quite honestly, the speed limit continues to be something that we have an interest in as a school district. This is nothing new. When Prairie View was built, we had a lot of discussion and work with both the county and the village. And in part, much of that led to what you do see out there, which are advisory speed limit signs and the crossing walk and so on. So the village of Holman Police Chief Mike McHugh has communicated with the highway commissioner, requesting consideration for the speed limit to be lowered in that area. In addition, the Holman Village Board, you may have seen recently approved a resolution asking the county to partner with the village to change the speed limit on that section of roadway. So I thought it was timely to bring it to the board's attention here, looking for any direction based on what we know at this time of what the correspondence or the decisions that have been made by the village. In the past, we've, we have felt as a partner with this type of issue, going back to when Prairie View was built, but we don't have a lot of information yet, such as what are the next steps? What kind of study must be done, related costs, and so on? But I am looking for direction from the board at this time. If you're, if you'd be interested in looking at some possibilities of either direct administration or assign it to the appropriate committee, which probably would be Buildings and Grounds. So tonight, it's an awareness and looking for, if there is any direction at this point. If not, we can bring it back and see how, where, what happens between, with the village and the county as well.
Do you think assigning it to a committee, I mean, what are we looking for? Are we looking just for adaptation or support of the reduction of the speed limit?
I know my conversation with Chief McHugh is that, you know, obviously, this, this has been an interest of the school district since it was built, and, since Prairie View was built. And would there be continued interest? And if so, perhaps additional resolution or communication with the county as far as a belief by the school district, making a change in the speed limit? So other than that, I'm not, I guess I'm not prepared to say tonight, specific steps, but would there be an interest for the board to make some kind of statement or do some kind of work?
Because I think the village did approve a resolution of reducing it. So, you know, we could send it to the Buildings and Grounds Committee, but I suspect if we all support reducing it, we could at the next meeting approve a resolution saying that. I don't know that it has to be studied or anything, but I would hate to delay it, delay that kind of, I think right now I'm seeing.
I would agree, I think, you know, if administration could just come with a resolution for the next meeting, I certainly would support that.
And I, yeah, I think there's a consensus by the board that, I'm seeing the head shaking, that we would support the village's resolution as well. And if we need to do an official one, we can do that. But also, I think if we could know who we might want to reach out to individually as a board, too, to the county board members, we certainly could reach out to those folks that serve on that commission and ask them for their consideration. I think board members would be willing to do that as well.
Okay. And like I said, we don't know, we don't have all the information as far as what are the, going to be the steps and costs related to studying this and so on. But we could perhaps craft something to bring back to the board. Okay?
Great.
Thank you. That's it for my report at this point.
Okay, then moving on to reports and discussion. Parent. Okay, then moving on to reports and discussion, parent transportation contracts. Beth?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I don't know which one you have first, but I only have two. And these are ongoing that we've had year after year, same families. Nothing has changed with the cost or how much it's going to come to, except for we do it on attendance of the children. So we take attendance and then that's how we pay them. So these are the two I have. One is for a child going to Onalaska for $360. And one is for a high school student that goes to a special ed school in La Crosse for a total, if they attend every day, of $2,160.
And I don't see, these aren't on the consent agenda, but they would be on next week's or the next board meetings. So if you have any questions, statutorily, we can either transport them or provide for a parent contract.
Right, which is, yeah. So this is the most economic way to do it.
Okay, thank you, Beth. Thank you. Good evening. Then staffing increase recommendations. Dr. Carlson.
You have a number of items under this section. And if I could just quickly, I'll go through each one. And if you have questions, we have listed them separately so that each one has a separate issue paper. We are asking as, we are asking for consideration this evening on these positions. But again, we've listed them separately in case you have specific questions on one versus the other. First of all, for, we have a recommendation for a 1.0 FTE ESL teacher. In recent weeks, we've experienced an increase in the number of students eligible to receive ESL services. And so Julie Cracco is requesting an addition, additional 1.0 FTE position. We believe at this time, we, we're looking more towards a one-year limited so that we can further study this. And so that's, that's what's being requested under that item. I can go through each one and then come back and take questions if you have questions on that. The next one is a seven-hour-per-day special education, educational assistant at the middle school. Due to an increase in students identified for high levels of support, again, Julie is requesting an additional seven-hour-per-day educational assistant for the middle school. And that cost is estimated at $20,500. We have a four-hour-per-day health office educational assistant at Viking. In order to provide each health office with coverage for the entire school day, it is proposed to add a one-four-hour-per-day health educational assistant at Viking Elementary. This request is the result of further work done by Pupil Services Director Julie Cracco with our school nurses and our principals, primarily at the elementary level, where a decision was made to move forward with reposting and moving forward with securing another nursing position with the intention then of maintaining a district nursing staff of five registered nurses. And we are hopeful actually, in speaking with Julie today, we're hopeful that we are, we can bring a nurse recommendation to the board at our next board meeting. So, but this is something that we feel is necessary to bring on at Viking most urgently and so that we can be ready for the start of the school year. Next is for the high school, a 0.17 FTE. And just to tell you what that really means, it would be over the course of two terms at the high school for those 90-minute blocks for two terms, first and second term. And so Principal Bob Bear is requesting this staffing increase for the high school in order to accommodate staffing for what's ultimately ending up being is our seeds course. A number of you have perhaps had the privilege of even watching our students as far as the skits and so on. And that's a course that meets terms one and two. And we're looking for, we have a teacher who is ready to do, and this would be an overload, a teacher that is prepared to do that. Some of our scheduling with our English, English Language Arts Department over the weeks and months has resulted in this need. And so the cost is estimated at about $10,000. And then finally, elementary staffing. Things continue to evolve, continue to change. We are, I think, holding right now still at 79 sections. But we have two areas. Now, at the last board meeting, the board approved the same recommendation, and that moved it to 80 sections, but we have not acted on that yet. This would be actually an additional one. So it would move us to give us the flexibility of actually moving to 81 sections if needed in our remaining days and weeks. So we currently have two areas that are really at capacity or close. The principals are working on those, and this would allow administration the flexibility of to move in a more timely manner. But that is a little bit of an update. Again, you approved at the last board meeting to add an 80th section. We technically currently right now are scheduled for 79. But I am concerned that we have two areas that we are going to have to closely watch, if not by the start, even through September. And so this would give us that flexibility. I believe I finished the list. I'd be happy to take questions on any of those, but these are part of the consent this evening.
Any questions?
Yeah, with the elementary, Dr. Carlson. If, if limits aren't met and another position is not put in, but then limits are exceeded in a month, does that mean that classrooms will be split up? Then a new teacher is hired and kids go to different places? I'm guessing the answer to that is yes. And so I bring that up because that's a concern to me. I, I know it's a lot of money. I, I do get that. And yet, that's my question.
Your policy, your administrative rule talks about, again, that capacity of for, I don't know if it's formally up, but because of the board's action, K, pre-K through three, 27, and then four and five, 30, capacity of 30. And anything over 30 or 27, we would then need to put in place some additional support or staffing. I say that because it could possibly take the look, some different looks. But the reality would be most likely moving to some kind of additional staffing or support. I'm not, we've done, this rarely has happened, but the few occasions, I know we have few principals out there that have experienced this, and in my short tenure, we have worked through this. We've, we've looked at some creative ways to bring more staff support. And it may not necessarily result in actually splitting a class. So there are some possibilities, but in the end, we would be looking to do something to provide additional support for that classroom teacher and to our students. So, but yes, Ms. Mayor, this could occur after the start of the school year.
Yeah, and that's, again, I'm still concerned about 30 kids in elementary classrooms. I'm really, really concerned. And I know SALC will be looking at that and talking about it. But it's all about the kids for me. And the high stakes that our kids have, our administrators have, our teachers have, even 29 kids is a lot in third grade. It's a huge, it's a huge thing. So additional support staff is wonderful, but it's not as good as a smaller class size.
And I think in the past, we've really looked at the principal working with staff and making the best decision as a whole for those students. Because you bring up, that's a challenging situation after the school year started and, and really looking at change of the dynamics of a classroom after those relationships have already started to be formed. And so it's a balance. And I know our principals have, they're, they're very sensitive to that as well.
Any other questions? I am curious about the health educational assistant. You mentioned that we are moving forward with the five RNs. In the past, have we had a RN in every elementary?
We have in the past. I want to say, are we looking at three years ago?
I think that's been our goal though, hasn't it, too? But because of...
And we're, we're encouraged now to be, we had some, I think, some very successful interviews and to bring us to that fifth. Last year, we had, through substitutes, we maintained, you know, much of the year, a fifth nurse staffing, I believe, if that's correct. And so we're looking forward to hopefully bringing on someone permanently.
But would you do five or would you do six? Would you look at six? We've got six buildings and, well, we've got seven buildings.
Well, we're currently looking at five, to achieve five.
So we would have not one at elevator, how would we split? We have one at the middle school, one at the high school, and then the three would be split amongst the four elementaries?
Correct. And probably for the past, at least two years, if not three years, we've, I think two years, Viking and Sand Lake have shared, correct? And so, and so that's where, and we already have some additional educational assistant hours at Sand Lake. And we'd be looking for Viking in this case. So we have been doing this for at least two years as far as the sharing between Viking and Sand Lake.
But would, because I'm asking, would our goal be to have an RN at every elementary? And we have, we have been making do, I think is what I've heard, because we haven't been able to recruit. And so, you know, I'm just wondering if, what's the goal? Is the goal just to have five or is it to have one at every elementary?
Well, we can, if, again, we've been operating under one and two, staff at this point to make sure we can staff five and then look at how that plan evolves. We can come back and present further and get on that if, if that's what the board is looking for.
Well, I was just, I mean, I was just...
Right now, we're, we're staffing, we're trying to achieve a staffing of five nurses.
Okay. Okay.
Are there comparables with other districts and what the goal is? I mean, when you talk to health professionals, the same way we look at teacher effectiveness or any other effectiveness, what does the health profession say with schools in terms of, from everything, from liability to helping our kids? I mean, I don't know. That's not...
Yes, we, we can. We have the comparable information and...
We do have, we do have that.
We have comparable information, I believe, Julie, and we can, we can certainly provide that, absolutely.
But we don't know what that is just right now, not yet.
I don't, I don't have that right here, right here.
That's okay. Yeah, I know. That was a surprise question, so...
That's okay.
All right, thanks.
We, we certainly have that. We can provide that.
Okay.
And then, so then moving on, Dr. Carlson, health office educational assistant wage differential.
You have an issue paper that talks about, it's the administration's recommendation to make an adjustment in the per-hour wage for the health office educational assistant position. This has been something that we've been discussing for multiple years. We believe that there are elements of this position that equal, at least equal, the uniqueness that our special education, educational assistance experience, both in the classroom and through our transportation, and then also our library media centers, EAs. And so this would, this adjustment would bring our health office educational assistants on par with those other areas. And we think that it's time to do that and appropriate. So that would be our recommendation. That is at a cost of approximately about $1,600.
Okay. Questions? Okay, then moving on to 2014, 2015 proposed budget approval. Mr. Miller.
There we go. Just had it delayed. Thank you. Item 10.4 is the proposed, 2014 proposed budget, 15 proposed budget. And you have three documents, the first of which is the budget memo spreadsheet.
And could you speak into the microphone? Thank you.
The budget memo spreadsheet is one of the documents related to the budget. You also have a budget memo narrative prepared by Dr. Carlson, which gives a description of what these changes are to the budget. But the budget memo spreadsheet strives to identify the changes from the prior year. And I thought I'd walk you through the, the sections. Is it, am I talking loud enough? No?
Yes, thank you.
All right. First of all, the revenue sources through the equalized aid and tax levy driven by enrollment trends, looks at an increase of 1.2 million dollars. And then the other major category is a change in the state aid, that what they call categorical aid, going from $75 to $150 for this year, would be providing an additional $302,000 for a total of $1,467. The expenditures are largely identified in the budget memo document prepared by Dr. Carlson and also detailed in the meeting tonight. Each of these items is identified by the board meeting date that they were presented, as well as the changes to salaries and benefits, increases in wages, health insurance and those kinds of things, the open enrollment tuition, insurance and so forth. The rest are employment-related changes. And that totals 1.5 million, 1,580.
And Ben, on the board, you'll note, oh, Ben, if you could just go back.
Sure.
Those last few items on that pertain to what's being actually presented tonight. So you'll see those. I did go ahead and put those on, beginning with, I think you see the ESL teacher and working on your way down.
From there, we talk about the changes to the program areas. And as in the past, there are some ongoing and some one-time increases. And then also discontinued would be that one-time from the prior year. This brings it down to a projected budget balance, the expenses out compared to the revenues increase of a negative $98,000. That's following a budget surplus for the 2013-14 year. The two years combined will be a net increase to the budget balance. And so I also wanted to see, show you how that ties out to the DPI proposed budget. I won't go into all the numbers on that, but there's four pages of numbers. But I did want to point out a couple of lines that you, you'll be able to tie out with this first document. The total expenditures, I'm sorry, the total revenues on line 57 for the general fund is the $42,921. And the expenses for, again, for general fund total is just over $43 million. And that nets out to that $98,000 amount that I described before. And so the, the line items of that budget reflect the changes that you saw in that budget memo spreadsheet. All of the changes, the pluses or the minuses were applied to the overall budget. Hopefully, that makes it a little easier to understand how all those numbers tie together. The, so that's the proposed budget approval. I don't know if there's any questions on that. There's another item kind of related to a 10.5. It's the 2015-16 budget. It's a, a budget gap analysis that we, that we've done. And this, someone answered... And this somewhat answers the question of whether this, this spending is sustainable. And what that, what that report shows is that, and I don't have that displayed up here, but I can, I can give you the highlights, is that the, due to expected trending in enrollment, that the revenue source increase will continue. Continuing these expenses as well as any other changes that we see in that next year, we would still have projected available resources of over $300,000 in addition to what is, is being presented here tonight. So that is the 2015-16, what we refer to as budget gap. And it's, it's a projection.
Ben, does that include the one-time allocations for this year? Or does not include that?
It, it takes into account removing the one-time allocations.
Correct. Okay, thank you.
But not adding them back.
Thank you.
The next item is the criteria for, I don't know if there's any questions before we move on to the next one.
Any questions? Okay.
Mr. Clark is going to be going over this item, the criteria for funding determination.
So you received in your, let's take me a second here to... You received in your board packet a draft issue paper. It's shown as a report and discussion item on tonight's agenda. It deals with the criteria used for making funding decisions. And this will be for the 2015-16 budget. Mr. Miller's presenting to you information on the budget year we're in right now, 14-15. And the budget calendar that the board approved includes some early work at this time, more than, well, it'll start next July, but we're way out in front. But these are the funding criteria. Criteria used to determine how many resources that are available will be applied to meet the long list of needs that the district has. What you see on the screen right now are the criteria that were used last year in the 14-15 budget-making decisions. At that point in time, there were seven criteria. I've also provided for you a copy of a revised set of criteria for the upcoming 15-16 year. And there again are seven criteria. They drifted over onto two pages as opposed to one page last year. And I wanted to point out some of the major changes. Major changes included making sure that the board-approved focus areas were part of the decision-making criteria. So if you remember, two years ago, we had strategic objectives, four strategic objectives. And we made budgeting decisions aligned with those four board strategic objectives. The board has since moved to six focus areas. And we thought it appropriate that we made sure that the criteria used to determine what gets funding matches up with the focus areas that the board has. So that was one of the changes. There's a removal of a criteria called essential departmental services. We believe that that is addressed most specifically in the board focus area of customer and stakeholder focus. So as we looked at our old description of essential departmental services, we thought it was so close to customer-stakeholder focus that it was no longer needed. We removed mandates from the criteria. The input that we received from the leadership team members indicated that scoring a mandate made little sense. If it's a mandate, it's a mandate. What's the point of scoring? So we created a more complete description of what a mandate was and was not. And if it is truly meeting this mandate definition, it won't be necessary to score it. It's actually a mandate. And then we wrote some descriptions of how to deal with overall scoring for a criteria, because some of the criteria have multiple measures. There's multiple factors to consider within the criteria. And what if it really matches up with, well, with one of the measures, but doesn't quite specifically address one or two of the other measures within that criteria? So the question was, well, how do you weigh that out when it meets one and not others? And those are outlined for you in the issue paper. These have, we visited with the leadership team on the August 13th meeting, talking about the direction we were taking with the criteria as we were seeking input from the leadership team prior to coming to the board. This would be up for board action at the next board meeting. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Switch chairs again.
Then the next 10.7, we're down to final revisions for 2013-14.
Yes. So this is a requested final revision to the 2013-14 budget. This does represent a timing difference. And, you know, our practice has been to present the final revision in June. But we learned recently that many other schools are taking advantage of the fact that the DPI allows budget revisions in this late in the year. And in fact, the state looks at variances in a negative light. And our ratings, for our bond ratings, looks at variances in a negative light. So we want to put our, our school district on the same ground, fair ground, as other school districts, and take the opportunity to make these revisions and, and balance them, so to speak, with, with the, with the numbers that we now know. And so to revise those. And so we're asking to accept this final revision, which would then be, become our final, our official final. Any questions?
Are there any questions?
It was interesting to read that, that other districts do that, but we were not. And this will help us out. So thank you for your work.
It is interesting, because usually tonight is the night we're voting on next year's budget and all of that good stuff, so...
But it said in here, you could do it up until August. And we're still in August, so you're good.
Okay. And then 10 point, let me get to my agenda. 10.8, advanced purchase of desktop computers. Thank you, Mr. Miller. Dr. Carlson.
Yeah, we, the board's asked to consider approval of a recommendation to not reduce the instructional technology budget for the 2014 school year as originally presented and approved by the board back in May. You may recall that the board approved an advanced purchase back in May. This, as far as, and that was in about an amount of 200, a little over $200,000. There was also an amount of about, I want, $80-some-thousand dollars from the sinking fund, too. But what we're really talking about here is right out of directly Jan's operational budget that she has available. And so the recommendation is based on, as Mr. Miller kind of referenced, the final audit results for the 2013-14 fiscal year, identifying a surplus amount that would allow for the avoidance of the reduction adjustment to the IT budget as a result of the advanced purchase. Allowing for us to maintain these dollars in our IT budget will enable us to immediately work on replacing our most aged computer labs, also continue supporting our digital transition teacher development, and expand the deployment, continuing to look at expanding deployment of our mobile devices. So I do not have this on the consent for tonight. We have it on the consent for the next board meeting in two weeks. But we are strongly recommending to the board. We feel budget-wise, we're, we're in good shape and can recommend the board, make this recommendation to the board. So if you have questions on this. Otherwise, we will be coming back to the board at the next one, asking for approval.
Any questions on this? Okay, no questions. Then the agenda re...